We would like to, excuse me, what prayer and pledge, prayer will be led by Councilwoman Sylvia, and I will do the pledge.
If you all would like to participate, you can bow your head.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the coming together, Father God, of the Saginaw City Council. Lord, we asking that you would lead and guide us and direct us in the correct way to run this city, Father God. We thank you for everyone that is gathered here together today, Father God, and lead and guide us in the correct way in Jesus' holy and mighty name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic under which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of his own. Again, good evening.
Good evening.
We welcome you all to our new home for the next nine months at least. So we welcome you to the Anderson and Richmond Center. There's just a little housekeeping we need to do. Council persons, can you please put your phones on silent as well as your computers? Audience, I ask that you do the same so that we don't interrupt anyone when they're speaking. There will be no obnoxious behavior, boing or clapping at any given public time. This is a public meeting. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. I'm so used to looking over here, Madam Clerk.
We'll proceed with roll call. Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Seals.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Ossash.
Present.
Councilmember Braddock.
Present.
Councilmember Wiggins.
Present.
And Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
You have all members present.
Okay, do we have any announcements?
Yeah, the city offices will be closed Monday, March 26th in observance of Memorial Day. The Splash Park opens for the season this Saturday, May 24th, and daily hours of operation will be from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Our next item is a proclamation declaring May 25th, 2025, as Theodore Rethke Day.
Excuse me, and this proclamation will be read by Councilwoman Garcia. Mayor Protem, I'm sorry.
It's okay. The City of Saginaw Proclamation, whereas Theodore Roosevelt, a famous poet, was born May 25th, 1908, and died August 1st, 1963, and whereas Theodore's birthplace, 1805 Grashett Avenue in the city of Saginaw is maintained as a museum in his honor, and whereas Theodore attended the University of Michigan earning an A.B. and M.A. degrees and briefly attended law school before entering Harvard University. The Great Depression caused Theodore to leave school. Theodore then taught English at several universities, including Lafayette College, Pennsylvania State University, Bennington College, and University of Washington, and whereas Theodore also taught at Michigan State University in East Lansing. During this period of time, he became a well-known poet and author, and whereas Theodore continued writing poetry and books, which resulted in receiving a Pottsler Prize, two National Book Awards, and the Boeingen Prize amongst many other honorable awards, and whereas Theodore's legacy remains strong in the city of Saginaw. His final resting place, as he remains, is interred at Saginaw's Oakwood Cemetery, and whereas in April 2012, the United States Postal Service dedicated a postal stamp in honor of Theodore Rethke and the Rethke Forever Stamp. And whereas Theodore once was quoted as saying, "A lively, understandable spirit once entertained you; it will come again. Be still, wait." As we profoundly honor this magnificent individual, we know the wait is over, as he is before us and will continue to entertain us through his poetry and writings. Now therefore, it be resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, and the mayor of City of Saginaw, hereby proclaim May 25th, 2025, as Theodore Rethke Day in the city of Saginaw, and call upon the citizens of the community to reflect on and honor the life of this brilliant individual. And witness of, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this day, the 19th of May of the year of our Lord, 2025, Brenda F. Moore, mayor, councilmembers Priscilla Garcia, Mayor Protem, Michael D. Boss, Carly R. Hammond, Heidi G. Wiggins, Malik Lamar Silva, Bill Ossash, Eric D. Braddock Sr., and Justin T. Seals, and also Timothy Morales, city manager, May 19, 2025.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
My name is Sharon Francis, the current board president of the Friends of Theodore Rethke Foundation, and on behalf of the foundation and our members, I want to thank you for honoring Saginaw's homegrown Pulitzer Prize-winning poet. Thanks to our founder, Annie Ransford, our organization has been committed to preserving, promoting, and protecting the literary legacy of Rethke for 25 years. We do this by preserving both his childhood home at 1805 Grashett and the neighboring Stone House where his uncle lived, and by keeping these spaces open for cultural and educational opportunities. Since I was here last year on Rethke Day, in that time, under Alex DePerry's guidance, we've completed more interior work at the Stone House, including first-floor insulation. And thanks to funding from the Saginaw Community Foundation, you may have seen it, we're completing some critical maintenance projects at the Rethke House. So we don't currently have any steps, it's just a big gaping hole, but the stairs are coming, so we're getting new front and back porch stairs, masonry and plaster repair, and exterior paint. And thanks to the work of Saginaw's Historic District Commission, as you all know, our two houses have been designated a historic district, giving our preservation efforts even more long-term protection. We just wrapped up our second annual poetry retreat, which brought together over two dozen poets for a weekend of writing, hosted at the Montague Inn, and featuring lots of local spaces, restaurants, and vendors. And we're gearing up for our summer event season, much of it funded by the Saginaw Community Foundation and the Saginaw Arts and Enrichment Commission. Led by Joyce Seals and Annie Ransford, these summer camps for kids have been going on for a long time, and they're super meaningful. I think it's one of the most powerful things that we do. If you haven't yet visited the houses, I hope that we can find a time for you to tour the homes. Anybody here, we would welcome all of you into the homes to show you what we're doing. Talk about Saginaw's connection to the poet and to poetry and the arts. We also invite all of you to participate as a volunteer or a donor. Again, thank you for helping us recognize Rethke's contribution to Saginaw's cultural and literary history, and we appreciate your continued support for this national project that serves Rethke's hometown. Thank you.
Mayor, let's take us to public hearings.
The purpose of the public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for councilmen to hear the comments from the speaker regarding a specific action being requested. Speakers must be limited to their remarks to the subject at hand of the public hearing. Please state your name and if you are in support or non-support of the public hearing. The main speaker will have 10 minutes, and every speaker thereafter will have three minutes. Madam Clerk.
Our first public hearing is regarding the fiscal year 2025-2026 proposed budget and property tax millage.
Do we have anyone here to speak to this subject matter? Do we have anyone here to speak to this subject matter? Do we have anyone here to speak to this subject matter? Last and final time, do we have anyone here to speak to this matter? I need a motion to close this hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our second public hearing is regarding the Special Assessment District for a police and fire millage for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Is there anyone here to speak to this subject matter? Is there anyone here to speak to this subject matter? Third and final time, is there anyone here to speak to this subject matter? I need a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Our third public hearing is regarding the Downtown Development Authority District Millage to be levied on properties within the district.
Is there anyone here to speak to this subject matter? Is there anyone here to speak to this subject matter? Last and final time, is there anyone here to speak to this subject matter? I need a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our final public hearing is regarding the Proposed Drinking Water Project Planning Document Amendment.
We do have someone to speak to that, thank you.
I'm Brian Van Zee with Fishbeck Engineering, here to give you a little presentation of the project plan. The city of Saginaw developed and submitted a project plan for SRF funding in 2023, and now there is a need to do an amendment to update it for some water main work. The project plan, or, sorry, the SRF funding gives low-interest loans and possible grants for communities for infrastructure. The summary of projects and their needs are, there's a bunch of dead-end mains, about 2,600 lineal feet of water main for dead-end mains. There's a, geez, 3,000 lineal feet of 100-year-old main on North Mason Street. There's 2,000 lineal feet of 100-year-old main on Perkins Street. There's 1,600 lineal feet of 100-year-plus water main on Franklin Street. There's 2,000 lineal feet of almost 150-year-old water main on Perkins Street. There's 300 lineal feet of 100-year-old main on Marquette Street. And, that's much better. And there's 1,600 lineal feet of 100-year-old main on Cooper Avenue. There's 1,800 lineal feet on Wadsworth Road, and there's 4,000 lineal feet on Bay Street. There was four alternatives evaluated for how to repair this work, and the only one that is feasible is complete reconstruction to replace the water mains. So a list of the projects and their costs are, the dead-end mains is 6.8 million, the Franklin Street is 3.6 million, Perkins Street is 1.7 million, Marquette Street is about 3.8 million, and Cooper and Wadsworth is 7 million. Now that is spread out over the next five years of the project plan. User costs were evaluated and what the effects would be on that, and the city had recently adopted a rate increase, and that was, these projects were included in that rate increase that was already adopted. Now, the city does qualify for principal forgiveness because of their disadvantaged community, so that gives them a better access to those funds. There is no long-term effects on historical or cultural resources, natural environment, or social and economic impacts from the project. And then the contractor during construction will take mitigation measures to reduce the effects on traffic, air emissions from their equipment, noise from the equipment, any soil or sediment caused by erosion, any, try to reduce the effects of vegetation that gets removed, and anything that is affected will be restored back to what it needs to be. It's pretty quick, if there's any questions?
Is there anyone, no conversation.
Oh, okay.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this subject matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this subject matter? Final time, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this matter? I need a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to public input.
Speakers will, speakers will approach the podium. You will remain, you will remain, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You will actually come up and we ask that you remain professional and respectful of those in the room. Madam Clerk.
We have one speaker this evening, it's Melanie Velasco.
Hello, city councils, it's great to see you all. You look so beautiful. Some of you are more beautiful than the others. All right, this is what I want to say, it was on the paper, that of houses that are all around this town, and they're abandoned, and they're looking like H L L, and people are in them, and it's getting horribly Saginaw, it's getting disgusting in this blight. And still, I want to complain about garbage. I think it should be maybe noted, maybe if people possibly could at least get their own damn garbage out of their own yard from looking trashy all around the neighborhoods. School's about to get out, and people are still doing 35, 45, 35, 45 miles an hour down residential street, if I can't read today, I can't, but anyway, because I'm really disgusted by it all. Yeah, Webster is like core, and I have R.A., arthritis, I have arthritis, and I hurt really bad for the evening hour, but it's cool. I think there needs to be more slowed-down children at play, or we're going to lose some kids because they're just going to damn fast. You also know that I want city, I want little homes, and I'd like you to, I can give you a layout next time of areas that possibly we could get and buy and put little homes. I stay in a residential home where I work and live. I do all the cleaning and basically all the cooking. I really get used badly, but I'm all right for it because I have a nervous condition, I really get really nervous, I really like to clean. Anybody want to hire me at 35 dollars an hour, I'm game. But I do highly of cleaning, and I'm very thorough. I still have my cat back, and I don't know what you're going to do about that, that ride, because my cat was never in jeopardy or in neglect. She was in a padded condo where it was layered, layered, and layered, and I would put a hot t-shirt inside there periodically during the night, and everybody that went out to the porch would feel her, and she's nice and warm. She eats well-managed food, tuna every three days, food, water, it all, yeah. And she's been to the vet, and she's been to the vet, and she's been, she has spayed and neutered. She's my medical companion for when I don't breathe at night. Now that's a very serious risk for me because I have a nervous condition. So if I die in the night because I don't have my cat, well, thank city for not doing anything about my death. This thing keeps moving. I like my cat back. My nieces said all kinds of mean things about me having bedbugs, I can't visit my fiance because of the bullshit, and she's very evil. Okay, she might not have molested anybody. I want to say bad. I really want to apologize for saying she might have.
Time's up, Melanie.
Time's up, Melanie.
Thank you, city council.
Thank you.
You know I love you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
Tonight we will begin with Councilman Braddock.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hello, everyone, everyone that attends. Just a little information that I would like to put out, far as at the SVRC, June 6th through the 8th, they have the classic rides. They call it all classic cars for owners, so they have a QR, it was the flyer at the SVRC for classic cars. Also today, we had the opportunity to, I went to the BCD Hardhat Tour with the community bishop, Marvin Prior, Community Development Center today. They also have another one, May 26th, 5 to 6 on Thursday, open to the public. I think it's a really good, a good project that's coming to the east side of Saginaw. And my first job was at Trinity, so I'm really excited about the project there, the community center there. Also at Holden Jones, they have a, May tomorrow, actually, Youth Empowerment Workshop, starting at 5 o'clock, so if you have any youth or anything that needs some words of encouragement and some guidance, you know, come on down. But other than that, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next we have Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for everyone that attended tonight's meeting, I appreciate you being here. I'm going to keep it short and sweet, there's, I'm sure a lot of our city residents and, well, township as well, noticed, you know, Davenport State Street, that's kind of, kind of all different. So I just ask you guys to pay close attention, close attention to motorcycles, close attention to the traffic change, just be more aware, because there are a lot of changes out there, and just want you guys to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Councilwoman.
Hammond.
Hammond. I was going to get there. Councilwoman Hammond.
Thank you. So last week, I was able to attend the Building Michigan Communities Conference, representing the city there. It was a phenomenal event, two days of talking all about affordable housing. You could definitely tell who was the finance people and who everybody else were, because all the finance people were wearing blue suits. They just, you know, co-located those sorts of events, but it was fantastic. I learned a lot, and I will be producing a lengthy report about the event and about housing in general. Coincidentally, the regional housing study that I've mentioned a few times before, being done by MCAG, Eastern Michigan Council of Governments, was just, just landed in my inbox a couple days ago as well. So I'm probably going to incorporate some of the housing study numbers from there, it's a really exciting time. There's a 30-day public comment period they have for that, so I'm going to, I'm going to ask what that means exactly, I'm not exactly sure how that works with public comment on a survey result, but once I get that back, I'll, I'll send it along to council, and if that is a public thing that the general public can participate in, I'll make sure, you know, it's, gets out there as well. Also, we have a very, very important survey currently ongoing, leading up to June 4th, which is our meeting, the city of Saginaw's meeting with MDOT over M13, and I believe parts of M81, and hopefully looking to reduce speeds, reduce the traffic, reduce the harm done to our downtown when we're, you know, constantly worrying about fast cars and fast traffic and big semis that use their air brakes right outside my apartment at 3 o'clock in the morning, which is always great. So I encourage you, it's right on the city's homepage, you click the first thing, it talks about the M13 study, I think that leads to a press release, which has a link in it that you can fill out the survey from. So it's right there, please fill it out. There is a mapping portion, that's kind of hard to figure out. If you can't figure it out, email me your comments, or, you know, fill out the form to contact a city council member, I'll make sure that those get in and are, you know, recognized in the MDOT meeting. Just really quickly, because I got a couple emails talking about some of the lead line replacement program, very important to understand, the rule regulating lead is called the lead and copper rule, because copper is also toxic. And in a lot of copper pipes and service lines that were installed, used lead soldering. So do not think that because your lines are copper and not lead, that we don't have to take them out, we do, because copper is, is, you know, we shouldn't be using it anyway, but also that lead soldering is in those pipes. So just for folks wondering why they're getting their, their copper lines taken out as well, that is why. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so very much. First of all, I'd like to say thank you so very much for coming to your city council meeting today. Got a few notes here. I'd like to say congratulations to our own Saginaw city resident, Mr. Jimmy Bell Jr. He was drafted recently into the NFL, and that is so, so very awesome, so proud of our young people. Our young people, a lot of our young people are doing awesome things. When you have great mentors and mentors like some of our young people up here today that are concerned about our young people, a lot of our city council members do a lot of things with our young people. Some of them, you don't hear about a lot of things that we do, but a lot of our, our young people up here work with young people, and we're, we're excited about what our young people do when they get chances like being drafted into the NFL, that's an awesome thing. And he is the son of, excuse me, Betty Bell, and the late Dr. Finance, Jimmy Bell Sr. Went to the, I had opportunity to go to Urban Air, I intentionally wore a dress, and they invited us to go to Urban Air and meet some of our graduates from all over the city of Saginaw. I talked to some of the young people, I met some of the managers there. Hopefully, we'll be doing some collaborations with some of our other youth centers in the city of Saginaw, so I wanted to put that out there. I was one of the keynote speakers for Prom in the City, and I, hopefully, we do some collaboration with that, that was their ninth year. It was awesome, their honoree was from Georgia this year. They paid for this young lady to come, her and her family, it was just awesome, it was awesome. This year coming up, June the 6th, 7th, and 8th, is National Gun Violence Awareness, Wear Orange. They're asking for all businesses, families, houses, to put out your orange lights, please do that. We want to show that we are in awareness, we're, we want to see this gun violence stop. We want to do as much as we can and support as much as we can. And they're going to be at the Morley Plaza on June 7th, from 12 to 3, they have a program there in regard, in regards to the national gun violence. Also, I want to just put a note out, be careful of children in your driveway and backing up, please be careful of children in your driveways. Thank you so very much, you have a blessed rest of the day.
Thank you. Next we have Councilwoman Seals.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This past weekend, I attended the, the Elected Officials Academy Advanced Summit, and it was held in Bay City. It was Friday and Saturday, it was very informational, and we talked about on day one, the power of building consensus with our council and the city manager. We've already begun this process in Saginaw with our strategic planning meeting and our upcoming and continuation of that development with our community, so they can have a say in how we shape our community, so everyone has an investment in the wonderful changes that are happening here in Saginaw. We also talked about during the first day, how to engage in civil discourse and as a city council, so that we can get the job done. And so how to be professional, but staying true to our authentic selves and to our morals. And so that was an eye-opener for me as a young politician. So on day two, we built off of that, began to do a lot of role-playing, which is why the EOA is very powerful as a type of support for young council people. It built off of day one, and talked about the five stages of a team, and also the five dysfunctions of a team, and how none of us are as smart as all of us. I thought that was very catchy statement by Ken Blanchard. And one thing that stood out to me was how a lot of leaders around the state of Michigan, from city council to village councils to township commissioners, how they talked about how the staffing, they talked about their staff and how they still had to continue running their cities, their villages, and their townships, even though that they were dealing with a dysfunctional council or dysfunctional board. So it was very sad to hear that, and so I said, this was very good for me to be in this, in this place this weekend. So they even, for example, they talked about stage one. So it was very sad to hear that. And so I said, this was very good for me to be in this, in this place this weekend. So they even, for example, they talked about stage one in dysfunctional councils. Talked about stage one was forming. And forming was how you conduct prevention rather than intervention. Stage two is storming, and how you have healthy disagreements and resolutions. But councils get stuck in that stage right there, and they can't get to norming. And that's where the power is, is in the norming. And so I hope that one day we can get to that place here, right here in Saginaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Councilman Balls.
Thank you very much. I have too been visiting a few organizations this last couple of weeks. Today, I got to attend a meeting at the Victoria's Believers, Reverend Pryor's new community center. And it's gonna be really a nice place. They got some money to get the building taken care of. Anderson Smack did on Ninth, on Ninth Street, Tenth Street there in Saginaw. You know, we had the opportunity to put money in buckets. We put a lot of money in the community centers. You know, because I honestly believe that when the community centers die, I think our children died more. So now we got another community center that's gonna help out our community with the violence that's happening here in the city of Saginaw. Hopefully, we can mentor these kids and turn them around so they can do things better. And on that same note, the, I visited the First Ward Community Center and the Neighborhood Community Center too. And they have some, the First Ward Community Center has some jobs. They got a program called Hire. And they teaching the kids different things about being employed, giving them the soft skills. And so anybody that know any kids that need a job, please send them to First Ward Community Center so they can get hired. The kids at the Neighborhood House, had opportunity, I told you guys about the birdhouse that we built. I gotta go back and judge them, because I promised them five dollars for the winner. But anyway, they even planted some gardens over there too. So a lot of things, good things are happening at the community centers here in the city of Saginaw. And when good things happen for our community centers, it's gonna be good things happening for our community. Other thing I wanted to talk about, I had the opportunity to attend a conference in Lansing with the Help Organization. A lot of other organizations all over the state of Michigan, community groups are getting together and trying to do things to improve our youth. And they doing a good job. They even have some victim resources for anybody that had a crime, that a crime that was committed against them, their resources to help them with funerals and things of that nature. So if anybody interested, you can look at my Facebook page or call me, I can tell you more. But there's a lot of things happening here in the city of Saginaw, and the street we have here about. The, I've been asked a lot of questions about the new park and the new building that's coming downtown Saginaw. And a lot of people are really excited about that. I told them about it, they're gonna have a theater there, and they're gonna have boat launches and all that stuff, and everybody's really excited. So I'm looking forward to those things happening here in the city of Saginaw, so we can, everybody can feel good about the city. You know, there's a lot of things we can do to help out our city. The number one thing I think we can do, and that's to mentor our youth. So I'm not gonna forget to ask you guys to get involved in a kid in your life. There's some people here that probably don't have any children, haven't had any yet, but there's a lot of, a lot of them out there that are looking for a mentor. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Councilman Oster.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome everybody to our new location tonight, and it's nice and bright in here. Just a few things, I'm glad that Councilman Balls was talking about some of the organizations, and he talked about Help. I had the opportunity to be with him this weekend. Help is just a phenomenal organization that got put together. And we talked about the juvenile justice system. A young gentleman came in, part of a program he's, he's working on, and gave a presentation on that. So hats off to that group, and it's always good to get together with, with the youth and get a chance to talk to them. Councilwoman Seals, I'm glad that you're enjoying all the MML training, because it really, I found it just as fascinating as you. You get a lot from it, developing your skills of being a council member. So I'm glad you're enjoying those. Good to hear that. I do wanna say something. There was a gentleman that passed away. His name was Stuart Frankie, and he was a singer and a songwriter. And the reason why I'm talking about this is that he was from Saginaw, and, but his dad was also the mayor of the city from nineteen sixty-one to nineteen sixty-five. So, so condolences to the family, and he was only sixty-six years old. Over the last couple of weeks, we did Team Up to Clean Up. I just wanna thank everybody in the city that came out and helped us clean up the city. Alan Rabidou, once again, provided me some statistics. Three thousand six hundred and fifty pounds of trash. So that's almost two ton was taken out that day. Yeah, there was mattress, you name it, they found it. But also too, I saw on Facebook, there's a group called Yes, Youth Empowering Services. And they weren't there, but boy, they are out doing a lot of cleanup in the city as well. So thanks to that group who gets out there. Just thank you, everybody who's taking care of, taking care of our city and giving back. A couple announcements, the Lawn Chair Film Festival, they haven't launched their, announced their dates and stuff, but they have a new location this year. They are going to be at the Case Funeral Home, and the time changed. So they have a new projector, they've been using some of the American Rescue Plan money, and this movie's will start at seven PM on Sunday now. So that's gonna help out those of us who have to get up for work in the morning. Couple other things, oh yes, also too, I had the opportunity to, Kenee Kapoo, she invited me over to the NAB, and they had a science fest. So that was a lot of fun, to get over there, see some of the things that they're doing with their programming. Of course, they got American Rescue Plan money from us as well. The facility is beautiful. If you haven't been there, they've really done a lot of upgrades. But it was fun to, to see the kids show their, their science projects that day and explain, and explain the, the science behind them. The MAC Center is another announcement here. May twenty-third, from noon until sold out, is gonna have a bake sale, so that's at their location here at fifteen thirty-seven South Washington. And keep your eyes out, because Jazz on Jefferson is back, now that Jefferson's, the road construction's complete. So June fourth is the date this year, and they start at five thirty. Thanks.
Thank you. Next we have Mayor Pro-Tam, Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Thank you for coming to this lovely place that we have now. I have to wear my sunglasses, because I'm getting a little bit sun over here, but. So just wanted to say thank you for the citizens that did come out for the Team Up to Clean Up. It was actually my first time doing it, and I had a lot of fun. I was with Mayor and with Bill. And I got to talk to a lot of people that were actually not even from the city of Saginaw that came, that were younger people. So I was very excited to hear that they wanted to come and help the city of Saginaw and clean up. And they just wanted to meet new people. They wanted to volunteer. So I'm in the works, maybe trying to do like a welcoming, because we do have young people here, but they just don't know where to turn. And so maybe if we can give them those resources, we can help them try to achieve what they're trying to accomplish and meet people while they're here. So some of them, they were from Colorado, they were from Arizona. So it was, it was very exciting to meet and welcome them and sit and have lunch with them and just talk about them, giving back to our city here, even though they weren't residents. So hopefully, maybe if they decide to move, they'll come to the city a little bit closer. So that was a great event, and me and Councilman Bill, we got down so many bottles of, empty bottles of glass liquor. And I was amazed. I didn't even realize how bad it was. And we talked to some of the local fishermen out there and why they enjoyed coming down there to fish. And we were showing them the medical diamond, excited. There was older veteran man, he was retired, and he's been down there trimming the bushes, and he was just real nice to talk to. You know, so when you're out there in the community, you're really meeting a lot of people that you normally probably don't talk to. So it was just nice being out there, and it was a great day for it as well. So I'm glad I was part of that. Actually, tomorrow, nobody's doing anything, about six thirty, it's called a town hall meeting, but I'm calling it more of a meet and greet, just to talk about where I come from, my background, and how I got involved and being in the position I'm in. So that's at the SVRC Building tomorrow, second floor. So anybody's welcome to come, and they are providing food, so I can't wait to see what's on the menu. So that'll be tomorrow. And then also, I know Thursday, I'm part of lead, I'm on the welcome committee there. They are hosting at the Saginaw CAC this Thursday, five thirty to seven PM. They're having a community town hall meeting with different resources, and the public is welcome to that. And then I wanna say that the SVRC Marketplace is having their farmer's market open Wednesday, which I've been a part of for years. So it's great to go down there and meet your local farmers, get some of those great plants and strawberries and all the good stuff down there. And then last but not least, Mayor Moore's birthday is coming up. So just FYI, National City Holiday. And that's all I have to say about that. I should be twenty-one. That's all, Mayor.
You know, that's cold.
So anyways.
Thank you. Yeah, another year older. I'm hoping that I can get wiser as I grow, as I grow. I wanna thank Tracy Brown and the McCaptive family. I attended, it's called Office Design. She's a young lady from Saginaw who gave out four scholarships and two thousand five hundred dollars to four students in the city of Saginaw. She does not live here anymore. She lives in Atlanta. She's been doing this for the last six years. People don't understand, there's a lot of secrets, or people who don't wanna stand up front to acknowledge what they did. When she called me, I kept trying to figure out who it was, who it was. I literally grew up with her and her family. And brothers, her brothers, she's went on, she's got a doctorate degree, she's got eight businesses. And she said that ten thousand dollars was no money, and she plans to increase. So there are a lot of scholarships out there. MML has scholarships for people. There are a lot of scholarships. We're gonna have to get out and get busy so that we're able to tell people about these scholarships. Two thousand five hundred dollars is a lot of money for a college student these days. And it's not going to the university, because they'll never see it. It'll get caught up in all of the books and all the other stuff. This money is actually going in the young people's hands. I was truly excited. On last Saturday, we cleaned the city up. There were several council persons there. I don't wanna name, because I don't want anybody to feel bad because they weren't able to come. But for my council persons who attended, thank you. I need people to understand, this is not Mayor Moore's thing. It is the citizens' thing. I just happened to be the estimate that started it. When I leave, I would love to see this continue, because it is a viable part of the city. It's the one time out of the year we all get together and we have fun. Let's be honest, those that came, can you not say you had fun? I met a lot of people. Every time I tried to pick up something, "What you doing?" I'm working. I cannot ask you guys to do anything that I won't do. If you picking up a glass, I'm picking up a glass. You raking leaves, I don't know about that one, but I'm gonna try to rake the leaves. You know, at least we put forth the effort. Saginaw is rising. On the fifth of June, I will have twenty mayors throughout the city of Saginaw, in Saginaw. We'll talk more about it next time. Everybody be blessed. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first, I wanna thank the Anderson Richmond Center staff for hosting us here today and for the next several meetings. Hopefully, it's not a year. We hope to have that project done by the end of the year, so Phil's gonna keep on top of that. I, I'll tell you that any of the other city departments do like having council members come to their facility, because I know you're all gonna tell me now that we need new carpeting here and other various improvements. So I'm sure that, that we'll work on those things with Phil too. So most of you are aware that the state of Michigan has awarded the city of Saginaw one million dollars in revitalization and placemaking program grant money, RAP, for the Riverfront Park. So that's gonna help us move forward with those plans. We know it's a pretty detailed design that they're developing down there, so this amount will help. It's administered by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. RAP program provides access to gap financing for place-based infrastructure development, real estate rehabilitation and development, and public space improvements. So I wanna thank Governor Whitmer and the MEDC for this award. And we've been pretty successful at getting these RAP grants, and I talked to a few of our MEDC representatives for our region. And just to show you how these projects build upon one another, a few of them mention the projects from the Memorial Cup. So the mural, the redesign of the food truck alleyway that we did by the, by the Dow Event Center, those projects were RAP grant-funded, state grant-funded as well. So they did mention those projects. So everything that we're doing like that builds upon these additional projects to help bring people into our urban core. So we're glad to have that, and I wanna thank Phil Carwatt, his department worked on getting that, and Cassie Zimmerman, her department worked on that grant project. So congratulations to them, and thanks for all their work on it. We do have our next City of Saginaw Citywide Meeting coming up on June eleventh. It's going to be at five thirty again. This time, we're going to meet at the Beacon of Hope Church, two one zero nine West Michigan Avenue. And the topic of discussion came from a council suggestion, twenty twenty-five road rehabilitation projects and construction projects and a parking regulation update. So come and join us to learn more about the twenty twenty-five road and bridge construction timeline, selection factors for construction projects, future construction projects, water and wastewater projects, and an overview of parking regulations. So at our last meeting, we did also talk about some of the ARPA grantee report out. So talking to Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia. We do wanna do that at a citywide meeting. So what we're looking at is, I think there are twenty-seven of those grantees, so we wanna spread it out over more than one meeting. So we're thinking to add a July citywide meeting. Normally, we were planning to do every other month. So our next one would be August, but we would add a July meeting and split those groups up for people who are interested in learning about what those organizations have been doing with, with their funding, or if they're in that planning process, where they are and what their long-term plans are. I think it's really important, because we've had a lot of organizations, and I know all of you have, that have additional ideas, but we have this funding out there, and a lot of it was for either capital projects, where they were gonna build out space. So I think one of our goals was to make sure that those spaces were available for other organizations when they wanna have either classes or training sessions or things like that. So how do we get that collaboration? And I think that's gonna be important to, to focus on going forward. Neighborhood recognition program, we've been doing this, I think this is the ninth year we're doing it. So the Scenic Division is ready for another Neighborhood Recognition Award Program for twenty twenty-five. And the nominations, the accepting of nominations began on Saturday, May tenth. And these awards are intended to thank those residents and business owners who take pride in their properties and care about the look of their neighborhood. Residents, neighborhood groups, city of Saginaw employees can all nominate local homes and businesses for exceptional yard work and landscaping. I guess this is the eighth year. And we pick one award from each neighborhood quadrant. Will be selected for June, July, and August, and the monthly winners receive recognition certificate and a yard sign for their yard. And then there's one grand prize winner chosen from the monthly winners and announced at the October Neighborhood Association Group Meeting. So the mayor was talking about some of the scholarships that we have available in the city for students. And I did mention some time ago that I'm, I'm now serving on the Saginaw Promise Board. So that program has been growing pretty significantly the last few years. And there's, if you're familiar with the way that is funded, it's funded through the state of Michigan, through some tax capture dollars. That amount's growing significantly for Saginaw. So this shows us that improving the property valuation and tax base is really important for these types of programs. So we wanna continue to work with that. And in talking to, with the, with the board there, one of our goals for the city is to increase population. So we've seen the decrease. We're below fifty thousand. A number of these, you know, we think about various funding, but think about all the funding that comes from the state of Michigan. Those formulas are based on, a big part is population. So the road, gas and weight tax dollars, that formula has population, miles of road. State shared revenue has population. We look at even, even our own income tax. The more people who live in the city, the better our tax base becomes. So the goals, our city goals really align with this program, and it helps a lot of students. So they are gonna have a Power of Promise Luncheon in October. And the focus for that discussion, normally they have a speaker, it's gonna be a panel, and it's going to be about the medical diamond, which a number of you mentioned. But we're gonna talk about the, the future economy, the medical education opportunities for students, career opportunities, and how our goals align to get the kids that, to stay in the city. There's. There's opportunity for education, there's opportunity for jobs, so stay in the city and help grow our population. And finally, we have, you saw all of the public hearings related to budget and the property taxes. So, I do want to, again, thank all of our departments and the Office of Management and Budget for the budget development throughout the year and kind of give an idea about the timeline. So, we're always, as city staff, either working on the budget or the audit. Very little time in between. So, the budget process usually starts in November and culminates to tonight when council votes on the budget, but it's a very long process. And balancing, working the departments to try to get their needs and fund those needs the best that we can. And then June 30th, fiscal year ends. Shortly after that, we start the audit, and the audit usually completes about November, which then the budget cycle starts again. So, it's always one or the other that we're working on. So, it is a long process, and the budget process, all of the departments work on, and O M B coordinates that and does a bunch of the work. And even after the budget's approved, it doesn't necessarily end this, they're gonna finish up the narratives and everything, and then they submit to the G F O A for the distinguished budget award. Similar with the audit, you know, when we get the report from Yo and Yo, we still submit to G F O A and do comprehensive annual financial report rather than just a regular audit. So, all those processes are always ongoing, so thank the staff for all the work that they do to complete those and continue winning awards from the G F O A. That concludes the management update.
We got any questions for the city manager? Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, go ahead.
The sun's in my eyes.
Go ahead.
You go first, ladies first.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions about Ojibwe. Just an update on the progress of what's going on. And also, have we ever thought about, like, as a city? Like, I visit a lot of parks throughout Michigan, you know, and some have, like, revenue generating, you know, opportunities? So, if we, like, sold a permit or something, it'd be a way to control the traffic in and out of there. Is that a possibility?
So, for the project on there, I think they expect between the shoreline stabilization and then they're gonna have to redo some of the trails that were removed. If you can see from the bridge there, they removed a lot of the trailways. They're gonna be doing that work for most of the summer and the road repair. I think they expect it to be done this fall. Phil's nodding, so that sounds right. So, Ojibwe Island was, and some, a lot of this is gonna come from memory, and Phil might be able to help me out if I get something wrong here, but the island was donated to the city by, I believe it was Ezra Russ family, is that right, Phil? So, when they donated the island, I guess, when we started to look at charging for events, I think that wasn't necessarily compatible with their idea of donating the island to the city as a revenue generating entity. So, we did work with them, and I'm saying "we" generally as a city, because I don't know when they did this, but they came up with a certain number of events that they could do annually that were revenue generating. Typically, those have been car shows, concerts, things like that. I would expect, we're working on another project there at the island, is gonna be the band shell rehab, the stage rehab. I would assume those would be similar type of events that we could, you know, we would continue to do those into the future. Those events, I think, became fewer and fewer throughout the years, potentially because of the condition of the stage and the fact that we have the outdoor event center at the Dow Event Center now, that probably had an impact, too. The biggest event that we had there was a free show, it was the W K C Q concert. They pulled out of that, I don't even remember how many years ago, 12 years ago? And that was not revenue generating for us or the station, but they did provide us, I think it was airtime to promote city events, so that was a kind of a nice thing to have. But, once we get that bandshell, we'll certainly work with organizations if they want to have revenue generating events there. Typically, I think we split that revenue between the city and the organization, whether they bring a band or whatever kind of show they have there. I'll tell you, so we didn't anticipate the project being as big as it needed to be with the shoreline and removal, but when we thought we were going to have events there, I think this year, we were getting more applications than we had been getting in previous years, so that's pretty positive.
Let me go to the side. Anybody else here have any questions? Okay. Mr. Austin.
All right, thanks, Mayor. So, this is kind of going along with the budget. And Tim, by the way, too, thank you. Tim's always really good. I like to look at the grants that we have coming in because, and it gives me an opportunity to talk about that in the public when I'm meeting with, as a matter of fact, I'm gonna be meeting with somebody shortly, just to kind of, they have a bigger presence in the city, especially on social media, just so that they can understand with our tax cap how important these grants are. So, thank you, staff, for always writing these things. I've got the sheet here in front of me. But what I'm trying to say is, it helps me to get out there and talk to people, when you talk about the budget and how that works, and then you talk about how the grants affect the revenue that we have to bring into the city. So, it does paint a better picture. But with the grants that I see here, we have some that are pending, and they're for the Riverfront Park. So, as I understand it, and I've been talking about, we have 7.3 million for a roughly $14 million park that we talked about today. And then we got the other grant for a million, which is the RAP grant, so that helps out. But there are some pending, which is a TAP grant for like $438,000. And then I saw two more on here. One is a THUD E D I Riverfront, that's an interesting name, and M D R Outdoor Recreational. Now, those are both for like 6.7 and 6.1. Is there a reason that they're pending, or is one, are they fed?
Yeah, so the D N R, one is a legacy, I think it's called a legacy. Outdoor Legacy Park Grant. I think that they get their, part of their funding from the federal government, so that is on hold. We were notified, we put in for that grant, and we were notified that it's on hold. They expect that it will resume, but we don't have a timeline for that. The other one is the federal allocation community projects, I believe is what that one was from, that we submitted to.
Okay.
One of our legislatures. I know we submitted different projects to each senator and representative's office.
All right. Well, fingers crossed on these, because otherwise, I know we're gonna have to make a few adjustments to meet the budget if we, so, okay, thank you very much.
Quick question. Is it possible that the city sign could, for the 6th, 7th, 8th, or one of those days that weekend, could it be orange and could it say anything about National Gun Violence Awareness Day?
The person who programs it shook their head yes to me, so yes.
Whoever that is, thank you. Okay.
Any other questions? You know, this is a beautiful facility, but this is killing us. It's killing us. We're all trying to bob in our chairs to get out the way.
It's not bad on this side.
Maybe we can switch.
And also here, it's too cold in here, so we apologize.
Make any notes you have, then get them to me if we need to adjust things. We'll do our best that we can. We have a note for the lighting that Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia told us. This is as bright as they'll go right now, but we'll see what we can do with those. But just send me, you know, any comments or recommendations you have, and we'll work on it.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk.
The consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the webpage and on S G Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Second.
Do I have any exceptions? No exceptions? Let's call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk. Do we have anyone that would like to report any water commission related to city activity?
Just a quick update. This will kind of address maybe a little bit, Councilwoman Wiggins, that you're talking about. So, Eric, myself, the mayor, I'm trying to think who's all on the committee, Tim, and that, we have the Ojibwe Island Committee that we've been working on. And so, the Riverfront Development Commission has approached us, and so we have a meeting coming up, but I also noticed that Saginaw County Parks is gonna be joining that as well, so.
Right.
They have a lot of good ideas for things to do with the island, and kind of what you were talking about is some of the things that I've been talking about, too, like, maybe we don't charge for a permit. But in the past, we have people that, you know, that have not been under the best behavior on the island, and then we have to go back there and repair things, and that costs money for us to do so. So, I have ideas that I'll bring back later, like, maybe if we even had a permit, you know, because it's a privilege to be on the island, and then if something happens, you lose your, but these are all, you'll lose your permit, but these are all things that we can discuss as a team and try to figure out how we can make some more, once, because we have to get through the construction process this summer, which they're trying to get it ready for the fourth, so.
Right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
And don't say it like that, because I'm sure the fireworks committee is listening to this.
It'll be open. We're gonna shoot off a bang.
For the Fourth of July.
We're gonna get it ready.
I'm gonna let the councilman know I'm on that committee, too, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I was going off the top of my head, you know, I am 60 now. I'm 60 now.
Please understand, even though there are certain council members on it, the bottom line still comes back to this whole body.
Yes.
Any suggestions or recommendations can be done from this body? Okay, is there any more? Madam Clerk.
To appointment of board commission and committee members.
We have two. I need a motion to approve, leaving room for exception. Move and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
To resolutions, our first is approving the fiscal year 2025, 2026 proposed budget and property tax millage.
I need a motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Do we discuss this or we just vote? Is there any questions? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our second resolution is approving the special assessment district for a police and fire millage for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
It's been moved as second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our third resolution is approving the downtown development authority district millage to be levied on properties within the district.
I need a motion to adopt. I heard it so moved.
Second.
In second, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our fourth resolution is authorizing sponsors of specified community events to use amplifying equipment.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and supported. All those, any discussion, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our fifth resolution is authorizing the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages during specified community events.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our final resolution is adopting the final project planning document amendment for water main improvements and designate and authorize project representative.
I need a motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? You went first last time.
Oh.
Ms. Hammy, Councilwoman Hammy.
My question was, hi, thank you. Do we know the project timelines for these specific, you know, proposed public works, or is it dependent on funding? What does it look like?
It's all dependent on funding.
Got it.
What you're gonna have happen here shortly, the next couple few meetings will be the 2025 S R F packages. What this amendment did was it amended, it essentially added our road projects to my S R F request. So now, our road projects and our pipe replacement will line up.
Yes.
And then the dead ends was a way to score a couple more points. The S R F project is all about scoring points. It's complicated, it gives me a headache. But, so the timeline lays out, some of these may actually move around a little bit, and then we'll have to come back and say, hey, we need to amend the plan again, and that'll lay out either if the road projects move or we see where we can score more points, and that there's that for our S R F funding.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. Earlier, you spoke about, well, you didn't speak, but it was spoken about disadvantaged community dollars?
Correct. So, Saginaw, and that's why you'll see, and I'm gonna talk about both the water and the clean water, the same, because it works the same in my head. For the drinking water, the city of Saginaw qualifies as a significantly disadvantaged community, which means we qualify for loan forgiveness. On the clean water side, on the sewer side, the whole system qualifies as a significantly disadvantaged system, which gets us into forgiveness. If we did not qualify for forgiveness, we probably wouldn't pursue the S R F program. We would just bond those or figure out how to fund those ourselves. But for the FY25 ask, we're gonna be right around $37 million, and it's about $13 or $14 million worth of forgiveness.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Councilman.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And Councilwoman Sylvia, thanks for, that was also a question I had, too, but the other question I had is just kind of a general question. You mentioned some of the pipes are 100 years old. In my mind, I was kind of wondering, what's, what is that material right now? Because I know at one time, it was wood.
Ductile, there's no wood that we know of.
Okay, perfect.
I won't say there's no wood. So evidently, I might be wrong. But, excuse me, cast is what a lot of that'll be.
All right, thanks.
And then, like I said, the one was from, let's see, on there, it cracked in 1884.
Wow.
And actually, age isn't even the worst part about pipe, as far as, some of your old pipe will be there long after we're in the ground with the pipe.
Councilman Boss.
So, with those water mains, are you gonna redo the whole roads, through the whole street?
That's the idea, is that we line up the water main project with the road project. So, we took what Travis presented a couple meetings ago and laid this on top, or laid this on top of it, so we'll be shooting for both of those. We would've done it anyway, now we've got state money to help us do it.
I'm just saying, a lot of people asked me about Perkins Street, man, said, oh my God, it's terrible. So, all right, thank you, I appreciate that.
I was just gonna reiterate, I know that we have some neighborhoods that deal with, you know, recurring flooding and stormwater issues when we redo the whole street, and all of this is expected to remediate some of those issues.
This will, this will, no with this. There's some other projects that we're working on. Right now, we have a metering project going on, and I'll talk data science at you at some point in time, where we'll start metering out inside the system. We're able to model and cook those numbers down, and it should point to some solutions and hopefully point to some more economical solutions. If you look at some of the older communities, such as like Buffalo, South Bend, they've been able to leverage the capacity. We've got big sewers.
Yeah.
Well, if you put some diking in there and do the math right, you can actually use your sewer for storage, which could help alleviate some of the problems over in the first ward. I've been to a couple first ward meetings to talk about that, but that's kind of our solution we're trying to throw at that.
Hold on a minute.
You're good.
Anybody else with any questions? Okay.
I just wanted to double down on that question. So, when you mean storage, you mean like essentially using it as a retention method?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions, thank you.
Any other questions? Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Takes us to miscellaneous business.
Do we have any motions or any miscellaneous business that we need to handle tonight? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and supported, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Anybody have a?